Good evening. I'd like to call the September 5th meeting of the City Council to order. We have with us this evening Boy Scout Troop 417 in attendance tonight to cover some requirements for Boy Scouting. Stephen Hill is the Scout Master and his son Jonathan is the Troop Leader. They're going to, they're from the Knights of Columbus, I believe, is their headquarters, and they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then stay for part of the council. So if you young men would like to come over on this side up here, then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Come forward. And I'll ask the rest of you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of religions, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Be seated. We have a couple of presentations this evening. For some reason, I'm feeling particularly old tonight. I don't know what it is, but a lot of youth in the room. Proceed. Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Bastido absent, Nardini.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Erby.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Beremis.
Here.
Hill absent, Shenko.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Udara.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Twelve present, zero absent. We have a quorum. So as I was just saying, we have some special recognition this evening. We have two baseball teams that did quite well. I'm going to ask the coaches to join me one at a time, and we're going to start with the 12 U. So Edwin Ramos, if you'd join me over at this podium to my right. Well, usually I have, if we have a special presentation, I have the people join us, but I think there's too many of you, so I'm going to ask you if you just want to stand while I read this proclamation, the members of the 12 U team. All right. All right. So I have a proclamation I'd like to read. It says, whereas for the first time in history, the Elmhurst Youth Baseball's 12-U Little League Team won the Illinois State Championship, securing the victory against Hinsdale with a score of six to one. And whereas with this historic championship win, the team advanced to the regional tournament in Whitestown, Indiana, which was broadcast live on August 5th on ESPN+. And whereas to get to this point, the team had to win its district and sectional championships in Illinois, which they successfully achieved with leadership and guidance from their coaches, Edwin Ramos, Joe Both, Wayne Went. And whereas the 12 U players include Michael Went, Dominic Ramos, Emmett Thompson, Caleb Lanes, I hope I'm pronouncing this right. I'll have you read it. It might be better.
Joey Pointon, Patrick Bay, Dominic Martinello, Xander Escarpita, Reed Gabuzda, Liam Campbell, Liam Larma, and Tanner Telford.
And whereas as a nonprofit organization, the Elmhurst Youth Baseball offers children the opportunity to participate in a baseball league that competes against surrounding towns. And whereas Elmhurst Youth Baseball League is a community oriented, is community oriented and focuses on safety and maximizing the players' individual development while working in a team environment. And whereas the Elmhurst Youth Baseball regularly meets and competes at the Elmhurst Park District Parks and Ballfields, the Park District has expressed pride and support of these teams. And whereas Elmhurst Youth Baseball's 12-U Little League Team is just one of the great examples of the many organizations for Elmhurst Youth that continue to represent the city in a way that is successful, impactful, and deserving of recognition. Now therefore, I, Scott Levin, Mayor of the City of Elmhurst, with great pride congratulate the Elmhurst Youth Baseball's 12-U Little League Team on their tremendous achievements this season and do hereby proclaim today, September 5, 2023, as Elmhurst 12-U Little League Day. Congratulations, guys. Do you want to go up there and go?
Mayor, you should be in that picture.
You think I should?
If you guys want to use the staircase, you guys, you can use the staircase. Coach.
Coach.
Coach. There you go.
I had a bunch of mini-coaches up here.
I saw your name in the paper. Congratulations. Outstanding. Ready to go, boys? Well remarkably, we had a whole lot of success this year in baseball. And I'm not, I'm going to read the first part of this proclamation, the second part about the whole league is identical. So I'm sure you're all paying attention the first time. So we'll take it from the top. Whereas the Elmhurst River Forest 14-U Team won the Illinois State Junior League Championship, securing victory against Burbank. And whereas the team, you guys can rise too, by the way. There you go. Whereas the team advanced to the Central Regional Tournament where they won four straight games to become the Junior League Central Region Champions and advanced to the 14-U World Series in Taylor, Michigan. And whereas under the guidance of coaches Zachary White, Karen Chee, and Winfred Fitzgerald, their 14-U team went 1 and 2 in regular play and 1 and 0 in international play at the Junior League World Series. And whereas the 14-U players include.
Tom Keen, Keaton Robinson, Robert Kolovitz, Owen Tilson, Josh Landry, Grayson Waters, Daniel Lottis, Xavier Martin, Liam Brown, Zachary Morgan, Matthew Davis, Gus Peters, Marcelo Garcia, Graham Roberts.
And as I said before, it's a nonprofit organization. It's community oriented, and it's just one of the great examples as the 12-U team of our sports in our town. So now therefore, I, Scott Levin, Mayor of the City of Elmhurst, with great pride congratulate the Elmhurst Youth Baseball's 14-U Team on their tremendous achievements this season and do proclaim this September 5th day as Elmhurst River Forest 14-U Baseball Team Day. Congratulations, guys.
Yeah, you guys can all go. The best part's done.
All right, we're going to move on with the meeting. If you guys want to stay, you can. If you want to leave, now would be the opportune time.
That was Matt Cahill's father.
Oh, protest.
Oh, Harrison.
Fun play on a team.
Like Smith in Ireland. Really, it's a really common last name.
Knows his parents had the time of their lives.
Oh, I remember.
You lived vicariously.
Oh, my God.
All right. We are back in the business before the council, back on the agenda. Item four, receipt of written communications from the public. Is there anyone in the audience that has a written communication that, sir, you have to leave the, stand, we have to leave the door open. Yeah, thanks. All right. Is there anyone in the audience has a written communication they would like to deliver to the council? So please raise your hand. Seeing no one, we'll move on to public forum. Clerk Tamer, is anyone signed in for public forum?
Yes, Mayor. We have Jim Hodap.
Mr. Hodap. Don't see. Oh, there he is. Mr. Hodap, as you know, if you'll approach that microphone and you have three minutes, the one behind you.
Can I talk to the front?
I guess, all right, since you're there. No, you have to use the microphone though because it's being recorded.
Well, we, it's really hard to hear, and the people who are watching at home won't be able to, so. You want me to go over here?
Yeah, that'd be, thank you, Mr. Hodap. So if you state your name, address is optional, and you have three minutes. Proceed.
Yes. Well, my name is Mr. Hodap, and I've been working for 40 years in preserving prairie in the state of Illinois and hoping to stop what's happening, as we all know.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hodap, come a little closer to the microphone because it's very hard to hear.
Yeah, it is hard to hear. Maybe they might close the door. So, but anyway, yes, I've been working very hard to save prairie for 40 years. My name's Hodie Coyote. I've had a field museum. I have Peggy Nobart Museum Outreach in the inner city. And the city of Elmhurst, I have an embedded real estate agent who doesn't believe that my yard is prairie. And I have a code inspector who agrees. And I've been fined $150 recently. I got another ticket. And I have native plants, and I have a prairie in my yard. And so I belong under Code 614, and I get prosecuted under 615. So they have no experts on prairie. I'm a 40-year veteran of prairie, and I know what prairie is, and my yard falls under Code 614. The other proposal I have in some sort of a salvage, I think we need to start preserving the ecosystem. And there's a lot of chemical spraying. People spray dandelions, they spray this. All those chemicals go into the rivers, and they contaminate the rivers. Seventy percent of the contamination from rivers comes from lawn spray. I think we should have a campaign in Elmhurst to discourage people spraying yards. There's nothing wrong with dandelions. I played baseball. I played football. I did all those things. We never got hurt and tripped over dandelions. We never got, if the grass was seven inches tall or 12 inches tall, we still played our games. We had fun. So I'm proposing that we start a homegrown national park right here in Elmhurst. And we have the Wolf Road Prairie, which is grade B, and it has about 10 acres of grade A prairie, very rare. We also have the Prairie Path, which is only partially managed properly from Salt Creek to Spring Road. But it should be managed properly all the way from Spring Road to the Toll Road. And what the Park District has done is let dogwood take over, and it's destroyed the ecosystem. We need the bees. We need the butterflies, and they're all on the verge of extinction. So I'm asking Elmhurst somehow figure out a way in which I can help to save the ecosystem, and we have to start here. Every person in the world has to do it. We can't afford to keep doing business as we've done before. So I'd like to start a movement, the Homegrown National Preserve. I'd like to have Wolf Road Prairie. I'd like to have the Prairie Path properly managed. I'd like to have Wilder Park, an Olmsted masterpiece. Olmsted believed in nature. We teach our children war games like football, baseball, basketball. I loved them all. But what we need to do is to teach games of cooperation. Who can restore, what group can restore the ecosystem best? Wilder Park is a perfect place. We have a university. We have grade school, and we have high school. We should have all those groups working together to restore the ecosystem, and we could have a national park right there in Wilder Park. It's already the number one place to get married. What a great place for people to come and to learn about the ecosystem and how to preserve the future of our children, because our children deserve it. People, we do a great job in the library, sports, et cetera. But I'm going to tell you the truth.
Mr. Hodap.
The people are doing a terrible job in terms of preserving the ecosystem of our world. So I thank you very much. You're the best of all the rest. I'm MC, Master P, the best of all the rest, the man that passed the test. And yes, I must confess, my destiny has finally manifest. I get the flow one more time because yo, I am indeed the king of rhyme. Ain't got a dime, but I got wack, two D, snapjack. Master P, everyone can see that's me, because everybody knows P stands for prairie. Now, I may be old and I may be hairy, but I'm the best of all the rest. I'm the MC to pass the green grasslands test. And yes, I must confess, my destiny has finally manifest. I'm still a prairie fool. You ain't heard the news. I wasn't a no-limit nature nut, but I made the move, and I won't stop now. I can't stop. You can't stop me. So boys and girls and young ladies and tig, don't try to stop me. Wicked whack. We got to save the ecosystem, save the future of our children, save the future of our planet, and we have to do it now. It's a world crisis. Thank you.
All right. All I can say is yo. Anyone else signed up for public comment? All right. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment but didn't have the opportunity to sign in previously? If so, please raise your hand. Oh, all right. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Tamer, would you please read the consent agenda? I'm sorry, announcements. I'm a little offbeat here for some reason. Any announcements from the dais? Alderman Shenko.
Yes, I just wanted to announce that we will be having a second ward town hall on September 27th at 6:00 PM at 395 West Lake Street. It will be hosted by Alderman Hill and myself.
Thank you.
And we will also be streaming it. Details will be posted on our official Facebook pages.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Clerk Tamer.
Youth Advisory Committee is open. The Commission on Youth is seeking applications for students, grades seven to 11, who would like to be part of the Youth Advisory Committee to the Commission on Youth. Members of the committee are going to help guide us and ensure that everything's in harmony with the needs of youth in our committee, in our community. Members of the committee will be asked to share ideas and suggestions and assist with promoting our Elmhurst Youth Commission events to the youth in the community. They can, applications can be found online, and they are, the deadline is Sunday at 5:00 PM, the Sunday, the 10th, at 5:00 PM.
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. Other announcements? All right, let's now move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Tamer, if you would read that.
7.1 Executive Session Minutes of the Regular Meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on August 7, 2023. 7.2 Executive Session Minutes of the Regular Meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on August 21, 2023. 7.3 Minutes of the Regular Meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on August 21, 2023. 7.4 Accounts Payable, September 5, 2023, $4,706,520.64. 7.5 Report, 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. 7.6 West Avenue Parking Restrictions. 7.7 DuPage County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. 7.8 Alley Vacation Requests, Myrtle and Walnut. 7.9 Northeast Elmhurst Sidewalk Funding. 7.10 An Ordinance Waving Bid and Accepting the Proposal of Xylem Water Solutions USA Inc. for the Purchase of Two Replacement Pumps for the North Elmhurst Sanitary Lift Station. 7.11 An Ordinance Approving and Ratifying the Execution of a Non-Exclusive License Agreement Buy-in Between Elmhurst University and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois. 7.12 An Ordinance Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Non-Exclusive License Agreement Buy-in Between 1911 Club Inc. and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois. 7.13 A Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Professional Design Engineering Services Agreement between the City of Elmhurst, Illinois and Baxter and Woodman Inc. for the 2024 Storm Sewer Televising Project. 7.14 A Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Professional Engineering Services Agreement between the City of Elmhurst, Illinois and Baxter and Woodman Inc. for the 2024 Sanitary Sewer and Manhole Rehabilitation Project. 7.15 A Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of Change Order Number Three for the Water Reclamation Facility Bundle Four Improvement Project. 7.16 A Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of Change Order Number One for the 2023 Storm Sewer Lining Project. And 7.17 A Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Notice of Award and Authorizing the Execution of a Contract for the City Hall Security Camera Project.
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. Is there any item of the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove, either to vote against for further discussion or other action? Alderman Cahill.
In absence of Chairwoman Bastido, I'd like to pull back 7.8 and 7.9 back to committee.
All right. And that is at the discretion of the chair, so those will come off the consent agenda. Are there any other items that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items 7.8 and 7.9? Alderman Deuter with the motion. Alderman Udara with the second. Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Bastido absent, Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Beremis.
Aye.
Hill absent, Shenko.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Udara.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent. The consent agenda minus item 7.8 and 7.9 passes. Moving on to item eight, reports and recommendations of appointed and elected officials. Mayor Levin, first of all, Q for a Cause was last Sunday, a very fine event that a number of the aldermen attended, some in a cooking capacity. Congratulate them for a well-done event. We have some events coming up. The Craft Beer Fest is this weekend, or no, we got two weeks. We had Rock the Block first. Rock the Block, thank you. Friday and Saturday from 4:00 to 11:00 downtown. It's one of our finest events. I hope you'll join us. Music, food, et cetera. We then have on September, we have the Beer Fest the weekend after on September 16th. You can get details at the Explore Elmhurst website, and I hope if some of the aldermen haven't volunteered yet to be celebrity porters, there's still an opportunity to contact either Dave Oberg or Kathy Jordan. September 11th is our Patriot Day event at Fire Station Number Two between 8:30 and 9:30 AM commemorating 9/11. I wanted to mention a couple other things. It was on social media. If you didn't read it, but Wallet Hub did a study of the best small cities in the nation. Maximum score achievable was 99%. Elmhurst, I believe, received a 97%. We were in the top 35 of all small towns in the country, but we were one of, we were the top, tied for the top one in Illinois. We tied with Glen Ellen. I think we actually were the top one. I don't know why they were up there with us. But so, for whatever reasoning, it's a credit to our town that all the things that we do, such as these festivals, the youth events that we're celebrating tonight. So congratulations to all of us. Lastly, I attended two funerals for two pillars of our community last week, Rich Rosenberg and Willis Johnson. Willis Johnson had a film that really commemorated a lot about what he's done for cities such as Elmhurst with the theaters, and there was a very educational kind of film, which I hope we will bring to the York Theater that would be available when it's shown. I hope aldermen, business people, and the public will come and see that. That is what I have. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Two updates. First, we're working with the Tollway to come to one of our future city council meetings to give us an update on all the construction that's been going on. So that's not necessarily an easy process. They have to vet it through a few people, but we're ironing out those dates. It looks like October we'll have somebody from the Tollway here. And the second item is that the city has been undertaking a review of our zoning ordinance, and as part of that, we are going to hold two open houses. Certainly details are available on the city website. They are planned for September 20th from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and September 21st from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, both of them at City Hall. As I said, that's, that information is on our website, along with more detail on what we are looking at. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I do want to add one additional announcement. On October 10th, we will have a committee of the whole meeting where there will be two experts, one attorney, one planner for training on zoning and planning. That it will be open for participation by the council. As a committee of the whole, we will be joined by the Zoning and Planning Commission. Of course, it's open to the public. It's a good opportunity to learn something about how we do our zoning and planning. Any other reports from elected officials? All right. We'll move on to item nine, committee reports. 9.1 Clerk Tamer, would you read the report?
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance Council Affairs and Administrative Services Committee that the City Council direct the city attorney to prepare the necessary documents to increase the whole rural sales tax rate by .50% to 1.50% effective January 1, 2024, and ending January 1, 2034, and directs the city clerk to file the appropriate draft.
the appropriate documents with the Illinois Department of Revenue. Sign OLP, Toledo Chair, Chris Jensen Vice Chair, Anne James Nudera, and Rex Erby, Alderman.
All right, thank you. May have a motion to put report 9.1 before the council. Motion by Alderman Toledo, second by Alderman Jensen. Alderman Toledo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, the time has finally come. We're finally here talking about the recommendation from the Finance Committee on how to move forward with funding and determining a revenue source for the funding gap that we have in our stormwater fund. I'd like to start off first by thanking our staff members, all of the members of the Finance Committee, as well as all of the other departments that support analysis for the stormwater fund, both the projects that have been completed, as well as the projects that we have slated to do in the future. I'd like to thank our committee for the thorough discussion, respectful discussion, and, you know, process that we underwent. And I'd also like to thank the community. This has been a topic of conversation for, you know, over a year, I think that the community has been aware of, and we've had many people reach out, share their opinions, come to some of our meetings, actually share their opinions. So I thank everybody involved in the process for helping us get to where we're at tonight. I thought about making some separate comments, but this is a very well-written report. Thank you, Director Coyle. And so I'm going to just make some highlights of the report that has been posted for tonight's discussion. The topic of our conversation is our, the gap in our amount of money that we have to pay for the projects that helped us mitigate stormwater flooding in Elmhurst, and the future projects that we need to do. So the background here is that, starting back around 2015, the city undertook many different stormwater projects that were critical to improving our ability and our community's ability to deal with stormwater during heavy rain events, and to limit the impact to residents and businesses in our community. Some of those, some of you may have heard of or have seen in your neighborhood, the Walnut, Myrtle, Evergreen Project, which was 20 acre feet, was completed in 2016. The Harrison Project, five acre feet, completed in 2017. Madison, early childhood, six, 6.3 acre feet, that was completed in 2017 as well. And the list goes on. I think it totals around 100 acre feet of stormwater projects that were constructed. All of the projects that have been done so far have directly benefited 473 homes and businesses over the last 10 years, and helped to reduce or eliminate flooding throughout Elmhurst. And one thing that's not mentioned in here, but that was clear as the city council and the community decided to undergo these projects, is that Elmhurst was getting a reputation as the city that floods. And this is, what we have done together as a community and paid for and are going to be paying for helps to stop that reputation that was developing and to increase everyone, everyone's property values in Elmhurst by putting these projects in place. Originally, when the bonds were issued for some of these projects, we, the city council at the time, approved a quarter percent or point 2.5% home rule sales tax that was dedicated to fund these stormwater projects. As time has progressed, those funds are not enough to cover the future debt obligation and future projects that we have thought that we will be performing for the city, including pump rehabilitation, pump station rehabilitation. So, tonight, in order to address the imbalance between what we have spent and planned to spend and the revenues that we are currently collecting, the committee and staff identified an imbalance of $32 million, which is, comes out to an average of about 3.5, 3.2 million for the next 10 years, in order to meet the costs for our past and our future plans. So, moving into the process that the committee underwent, early on in the process, the committee identified three potential new revenue sources for the stormwater fund. Those three were increasing property taxes, creating a new fee called a stormwater fee, and then finally, an increase in the home rule sales tax. So, property taxes was discussed at length on the committee. Many pros, there's pros and cons to all of these, and the pros and cons are listed in the report. We vetted a stormwater fee. The city council approved a consultant to assess how a stormwater fee could be implemented in the city of Elmhurst, and how much it would cost to do so. And then the final option, the home rule sales tax, which is our recommendation tonight, was also discussed, along with all of the pros and cons of that option. So, as we deliberated, and after gathering lots of information, the committee decided that the stormwater fee was not an appropriate revenue source, citing the high administrative costs of the program and the burden to administer the program over time. Then, the committee discussed the property tax option, and the committee noted that primarily, we would like to use, and the policy of the city, informal policy, has been that our city tax levy covers pension obligations and other operating needs of the city. So, including, citing that fact, as well as the fact that we expect pension costs to increase with the market volatility that we've experienced during the COVID years, and as well as the importance of keeping our property taxes low and flexible, the committee also decided against using property taxes as a funding source. So finally, we come to the home rule sales tax. And the committee is recommending a 0.5% increase in the home rule sales tax effective starting January 1st of 2024, and it will be fully dedicated, that full increase will be dedicated to fund the stormwater fund. This increase will generate approximately $4 million each year, and will meet all of the financial need that has been identified. And some of the positives of why the committee reached this conclusion, that includes that it is a very simple way, simple and easy way to collect and solve all of the gap, the funding gap, in one, with one solution, essentially. It's very administratively efficient to collect, so we don't need extra staff time to do it. We don't have to hire people to do it, as was the case potentially with the stormwater fee. Also, the home rule sales tax is paid by both residents and non-residents, whereas the other two funding options that were seriously considered were borne by the Elmhurst community alone. It is important to note that home rule sales tax is not applied to common grocery items, automobiles, drugs, or medical items. And then finally, one of the concerns of the committee and other council members, as well as the community, is where would this leave Elmhurst? Where would this increase in home rule sales tax lead Elmhurst as it relates to other communities and their sales tax rates? And this was important to the committee, and with surveying of other communities that we would compare ourselves, and that, which are around us, we found that even after the increase, Elmhurst would end up being at 2.5% for their combined home rule sales tax and food and beverage tax. And the comparison for that portion of the sales tax to other communities would be, Downers Grove is 2.5%, so we would be equal to Downers Grove, Glen Allen at 2.75%, Lombard at 3% for that comparison rate, and Oak Brook at 2%. So we're certainly within the ballpark of other communities near us and comparable to us after this rate would be increased. The last part that the committee discussed, which was important to everyone on the committee, was recommending a sunset that goes along with this increase in the home rule sales tax. And a sunset is a clause that we can attach when we file with the Illinois Department of Revenue that automatically will eliminate that 0.5% increase at a date in the future. And we are recommending a date of 10 years from the beginning of this home rule sales tax. And that's based on some modeling of how much we expect the sales tax to deliver over the course of those 10 years, as well as allowing for a little bit of flexibility for ups and downs in the economy over that time. It's important, I think, for the public and our council members to note that the way that we are proposing the sunset to be administered is such that it will require action from a future city council to keep the tax in place. If no action happens in the future, the tax will revert back down by that half percent. We also are recommending that future finance committees on an annual basis review our projections, our modeling, the expenses within the fund, so that we can adapt, possibly reduce the sales tax by a quarter percent or that 0.5% in the future sooner. That is always a possibility. So with that, I will rest my explanation of the report, and appreciate everyone's support, and entertain anyone's questions. Thank you.
All right, and before I open it for questions, I want to also thank the committee, because I was there to bear witness to the hard work, the thorough discussions, the deep analysis. This was one of the big topics we face, and I thank you, each of you, for your work on this particular topic. Discussion. Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. I totally agree with Chair Toledo. Beautifully written report, very detailed, and, you know, from my perspective, all completed and future stormwater projects, they were necessary for the city, and will be necessary for the city. The report points out, or Alderman Toledo mentions, that we're starting to get a reputation, and the benefactors from the projects that we've completed and future projects are all the residents of Elmhurst through our strong home values. So, it was imperative to do the projects. You know, the downside is a revenue source has to be established to pay for this work that was required in the cost of those projects. I do appreciate the hard work and very thorough, I'm sure, debate that went on amongst staff providing the information and the Finance Committee. I really appreciate the options that have been laid out, and I do feel that the best option for the city has represented in this report. You know, I particularly like and appreciate the annual review process. I would love nothing more than for this to actually get shut down earlier, or sunset earlier, if possible, shorter than the 10 years. And for all those reasons, I am definitely in support of this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Brennan. Additional discussion? Alderman Nardini?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be repeating a bunch of things. The report was super-duper clear. Anybody sitting at a kitchen table would absolutely understand everything in front of the issue, and the deliberation was really thorough, all three points. I'm a dissent. I'm a no vote. I don't have consensus with the council, but I wanted to briefly say why. It seems of the three options, the property tax, the home rule sales tax, and the stormwater fee, that home rule sales tax seems to be the least direct. I come at this as a small business owner, and so I want to thank the Elmhurst Small Businesses for the lift that we're asking of them. To reiterate a couple of things, this is clearly a capital need. This wasn't folly. This had to be done. And Elmhurst with some no-go zones that had flooded basements would be a real estate pariah. We have solved a problem, and I thank the committee for doing it. The, if there are business owners in Elmhurst listening, when you write your ST1s at the end of the month, just remember you are in the middle of the pack here. We are not unduly burdening you with peer cities, and the sunset is appropriate. And I want to thank the committee for solving the problem. I just wish the outcome had been a different revenue stream.
Thank you, Alderman Nardini. No additional discussion. Bless you. Clerk Tamer, I'll ask you to call the roll.
Bastido, absent. Nardini?
No.
Erby? Excuse me, Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Hill, absent. Shenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Levin ayes, one nay, two absent.
Levin ayes, one nay, zero absent. Report 9.1 is adopted. I would like to comment that we have been leaders in this stormwater problem. Other communities have come to suffer the same fate, and through my participation in DuPage Managers and Mayor's Conference, it's, I see people looking to Elmhurst to see, and when I say the problem, I don't mean how to pay for it, I mean the problem with the water. So we were leaders out there. We were the ones who, despite a lot of people shouting to solve it now, we took the time to hire consultants, the best consultants around, to come up with a plan, to rank what work should be done, to discount what work was not really cost-effective, to go out and get it done, to spend some tough negotiations dealing with the Park District and the School District, and we got it done. And it's a credit to all the people in the council before us, and now we have found a way to pay for it. And I will tell you, we had some big storms this summer, and like, you get kind of nervous, like the phone's going to be ringing, I'm going to, I'm sure some of you have experienced this, the more senior aldermen walking into someone's basement that is brand-newly remodeled, and there's water, you know, two or three feet. For all the heavy rains we had this summer, we had really nothing, no significant events. I'm sure I'll get a couple calls tomorrow that something happened, but nothing widespread like we used to see with the sewer hole, the manhole covers popping off, and whole neighborhoods inundated. So, we did the right thing. We improved the value of the city. The committee found a responsible way to pay for what we needed to do, so thank you all for that. Item 10, other businesses. Is there other business to be brought before the council this evening? Seeing none, item 11, may have a motion to adjourn. Alderman Brennan with the motion. Alderman Nudera with the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.